Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Hampden Town Council meeting of August 20th. Would you please help me join the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and good evening. Welcome to the general public who's here. First item is a consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on it? Anything needs to be left out? If none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Now, for public comments. Public comments are for the public to comment on anything that is not on this agenda. If you have a public comment for something not on the agenda, now is your time to come up and speak. Anytime that one does come up and speak, please give us your name and your address. Would be appreciated. Okay, policy agenda. No news of presentations. First item is a public hearing and amendment to the Hampden Mobile Home Park Ordinance, Section 8.3.18, minimum separation requirements. Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Hampden Mobile Home. Excuse me, let me start again. I forgot my green light. Make a motion to open the public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Hampden Mobile Home Park Ordinance, Section 8.3.18, minimum separation requirements.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Do I have any public comment on this? Counselor comments?
No, we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got away. You didn't punch me again.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes.
It's unanimous. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this? Being none, any counselors discussion? Dennis?
Just a reminder, and I won't get into the weeds on this, but we're, in essence, we're just modifying existing ordinance to conform with state standards. And it has to do with an improvement in the property at the Mobile Home Park on 1A. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Being none, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Could I have a vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. I'd like to have a motion for the Hampden Mobile Home Park Ordinance, Section 8.3.18, minimum separation requirements.
I make a motion the town council. You shut yourself off. I make a motion the town council approve the amendment to the Hampden Mobile Home Park Ordinance, Section 8.3.18, minimum separation requirements.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item B, proposed ordinance entitled Town of Hampden Moratorium Regarding Medical Marijuana Retail Stores. Could I have a motion for a public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Do I have to do? I don't have to do. I don't have to. I just did the other night because of the emergency. Okay. Do I have any public comments on this? Being none, any counselor discussion? Yes, Dennis?
I'd suggest, and I'm not suggesting I can, but for the sake of the public watching, who wasn't at the council, the committee meeting, and might just see a quick vote now, at least have the general sense of what we're voting on and why. Maybe the town planner could help with that.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Karen Cullen, town planner. Two recent actions by the state legislature have amended the Medical Marijuana Act, which has resulted in a 90-plus day gap where any registered caregiver could open a medical marijuana retail store in any location where retail sales are permitted in town without needing any permits or other approvals from the town. Due to concerns about potential negative impacts of this use, on August 6th, the town council adopted an emergency ordinance which went into effect that night, which prohibited these medical marijuana retail stores. Under our town charter, that will be in effect for 60 days. The proposed ordinance before you tonight essentially extends that prohibition to a total of 180 days, as is permitted for moratoriums under state law, which would be till February 2, 2019. If the state has not completed the amendments to their rules for medical marijuana quickly enough for us to adopt local regulations pertaining to medical marijuana retail stores, then this moratorium can be extended up to 180 days. And if adopted tonight, this ordinance will become effective on September 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any further questions by counselors? If none, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All of those in favor? It's unanimous. I'd accept a motion to propose an ordinance entitled Town of Hampden Main Marijuana Ordinance. Oops, I'm sorry. I jumped down one. Proposed ordinance entitled Town of Hampden Moratorium Regarding Medical Marijuana Retail Stores.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this? Any counselor comments? Again, it was explained by the town planner, so all of those in favor of this ordinance? That's unanimous. Now, we'll jump down to the proposed ordinance entitled Town of Hampden Main Marijuana Ordinance.
Move to open the public hearing?
Second.
Been moved and seconded a couple of times. All of those in favor? That's unanimous. At this time, I'd ask for any public comment on this. Karen, perhaps you'd like to get up and speak on this?
Here I am again. Still Karen Cullen, the town planner. The bottom line on this ordinance is that under Title 28B, Section 1502 of the state laws, the town has the authority to limit the number of mature marijuana plants on a single property, provided this limitation does not infringe on the right of any individual aged 21 or over to grow three mature, plus 12 immature, plus an unlimited number of seedlings on the property on which they are domiciled, in other words, where they live. The proposed ordinance does this, placing a limit of nine mature plants on any single property. In order to avoid a co-op type business on a property in an inappropriate location, such as in the middle of a neighborhood, staff recommends adoption of this proposed ordinance. Once the state has completed the rules for adult-use marijuana, we intend to revisit this and propose modifications that make sense. For example, it might be sensible to allow some form of co-op arrangement for adults aged 21 or over who do not own any land, who wish to grow their own plants, perhaps in certain zoning districts, provided certain criteria or standards are met. As you're well aware, we have some fairly stringent requirements on medical marijuana in our ordinance right now. And what I'm thinking is that it may make sense to do something similar to that for this particular type of use. On the other hand, maybe we don't want to do that. We won't know until we've gotten more information from the state as they complete their rulemaking process. So by taking action tonight, you would be setting the limit at nine plants. And that would obviously be subject to change in the future if we determine that it would made sense to do so. If adopted tonight, this ordinance will become effective on September 19th.
Thank you, Karen.
So I just have a couple of questions, just for clarification and everything. What we're discussing here is we're talking about an individual's right, I guess, or ability to grow recreational marijuana or personal-use marijuana. We're not talking about a greenhouse business or anything like that.
That's right. This only pertains to personal use of adult use, otherwise known as recreational marijuana. It does not pertain to anybody who wants to grow marijuana for the purpose of selling it or any other form of transfer to somebody else. So it's just for personal use.
Okay.
The state law.
So Dennis can't have any more than nine plants? He's gonna have to cut down.
Dennis, on his own, for his own personal use, can have no more than three mature plants.
Okay.
He can have, if Dennis lives alone, then he can have his three plants, and two of his friends or buddies or enemies or whatever can have three plants, three mature plants each, on his property if there is a written agreement between Dennis and those people who are growing.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And for those in the audience and at home, I am joking and jabbing at Dennis. So, thank you.
I was gonna ask, what about my invisible friends? But I won't go there.
Thank you, Karen.
If the ordinance goes into place tonight that limits to nine plants per property, and the state comes back whenever and says, no, it can be 12 or 15, at that point, we would have to come back and change the ordinance to reflect the different amount, correct? And it'd be the same if it goes down, obviously.
Yes.
So my question is, if we set it at nine, the state comes back and says it's six, we have to come in and have a new ordinance put in place, but that doesn't take effect for how long?
30 days.
Okay. So in that 30-day interim, would they still be legal to have the larger amount as opposed to the smaller amount? Or?
I don't know the answer to that question. That's one of those legal nuances. And for people who are familiar with it, under the original Marijuana Legalization Act, people could have a maximum of six mature marijuana plants. In the newly adopted, revised Marijuana Legalization Act, they have changed that to three, but they've built in a timeframe where people who already have six can gradually reduce to a maximum of three, so that by a certain date, and I can't remember what that is off the top of my head, people have to have no more than three per person who's domiciled on the property.
So this begs the question or questions, who enforces this? Does Joe in the force go out knocking on doors and counting plants?
That's one of the big questions that we all have. I think all municipalities in the state have the same question, is who's gonna deal with the enforcement? And my, I mean, well, I shouldn't hazard a guess, but my guess is gonna be that it's gonna be the local police or sheriffs or whoever, and it's probably gonna be by complaint basis.
Right, incident-type of a thing. Okay, thank you.
And one of the things that I'm thinking in terms of these, in terms of growing in a co-op type situation, it's primarily would benefit people who are renting and don't own any property, so that rather than saying that if you rent property, I mean, if you rent where you live, then you don't have any option of growing any marijuana for personal use, whereas the state law clearly gives everybody who's aged 21 and over the right to do so, then there may be some reason for us, or, I mean, it may make sense for us to actually provide that. But again, in only certain locations, in certain zoning districts, and with probably fairly strict criteria as far as how that's gonna go. If we did that, it would be easier for us to police it, because we would probably do that with some kind of an approval process before the planning board, as opposed to, you know, and people can just go out and grow it in their backyard right now without any approval from anybody.
And quite frankly, I like it that way.
Yes, Dennis?
Just a comment of acknowledgement. I mean, this is one of those issues that's going to leave some people dissatisfied in the long run, no matter how it goes. But in the interim, I don't think we can fully appreciate the thousands, thousands of hours. People in Augusta have worked on this, right, Representative Hagan? And I want to single out, out of respect, the town planner, who started going to workshops out of town well over a year ago, and has been trying to keep up with correspondence coming out of Augusta, which has never been clear, for understandable reasons, all the way along. And then we sit in committee meetings going, huh? And what did that mean? And, oh no, that was medical, this was recreational. So appreciate the work you've done, including trying to keep us straight.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I'll make one more comment, and that's the ordinance that's before you tonight is titled just Marijuana Ordinance, and that's for a reason. The idea is that as time goes on and we get the information that we need from the state rulemaking process, then we'll be able to go in. And my intention is to put, if not all, almost all of the regulations that pertain to marijuana, whether it's adult use or medical, into this one ordinance, so that it's easy for people to be able to find whatever they need to know about marijuana and local regulations here in Hampden.
Is there, on the laws written by the state, is it carte blanche that it's three plants, or are the communities gonna have any say into raising or lowering that amount?
No, it's by this, in the state law, it's three. It's the maximum of three mature plants, 12 immature plants, and an unlimited number of seedlings per person who is aged 21 or over. What the state is allowing municipalities to do is to put a cap on the number of plants that can be grown on a property over and above the number that can be legally grown under that 312 indefinite, or unlimited number per person who's domiciled. I probably should've started with this, but the state allows people to grow marijuana in three different locations, one of three different locations. One is the property upon which you're domiciled. The second is the property that you own on which you're not domiciled, which could be a vacant piece of land someplace. And the third is on somebody else's property, provided that there's a written agreement between the property owner and the person who's doing the growing and caring for the plants.
Any further questions? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Being none, could I get a motion to come out of open session? I would open up for, yes, okay. We'll do it again.
(inaudible).
Yeah, it's a green button, yeah.
Sorry. Anyway, thank you, Karen. And the question that I have, I guess, more than anything, is dealing with 1334 Carmel Road North in Hampden, which is directly across the street from me. The part about someone growing on someone else's property is a concern for me. It's a large piece of property. I'm hoping at some point there's going to be restrictions as to the number of people that can grow on someone else's property. Another question that I have is, maybe Matthew can answer this, I don't know. If someone signs up to grow on someone else's property, does that person tend the plants for someone else, or do they come and tend them themselves? Do we know how that works? Yes, what?
Yes, I know how that works. Ultimately.
Finish this, and then, okay. All right, so that's my question. I know. Hi. Let me see. Anyway, that is one of my biggest concerns, is right now, dealing with that. And I don't know, I've just lost my, total lost my train of thought here, but, anyway. Oh, I know what I was gonna mention, that above all, and through this whole process, I just hope that we can all keep in mind that the town of Hampden voted 60/40 against marijuana in that town. 60/40. So 60% of the people in this town did not want to have to deal with this, me being one. So, please keep that in mind.
Thank you, Valerie. Karen, you have some clarification, I guess?
Just wanna answer those two questions. The restriction on the number of people that can grow is by default three, because the number of people, I mean, the number of plants per person is three. So, I mean, is nine. So three people can grow three plants, that's a total of nine. So working backwards, it would be three people. And that would be in addition to those who are domiciled on the property. And to your other question regarding who tends the plants, it is the person who is growing them for their own use, so that the landowner does not take care of the plants. It has to be the people who are growing the plants for their own use.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Name and address, please.
Push. There we go. Matthew Davidson, 1334 Carmel Road North in Hampden. Just to be brief and direct in addressing some of the things that were said, 1334 Carmel Road, Hampden, is a medical grow facility for medical patients only. Nothing we do there is in an adult-use capacity. We have regular checks to make sure that we are compliant. Everything that we're talking about tonight has to do with adult use and personal consumption. I will never have any kind of plant count that falls under that specific description. That being said, our plant count will always be compliant with medical law, as that is how we define our property. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Any other public like to comment on this while we're in public session? Any counselors? Being none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Make a motion that the town approve an ordinance entitled Town of Hampden Main Marijuana Ordinance.
Second.
There we go. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded for the Main Marijuana Ordinance. Is there any public question on this, or comments? We've heard about it before from Karen, so I don't think we need her up there again. Counselors, you have anything else? Being none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now, the next one is proposed ordinance authorizing appropriation and borrowing of funds to finance road and bridge improvements. Could I have a motion to go into open public session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? That's unanimous. Perhaps I'd like to turn this over at this time to Jim. Do you have anything to say about it? Or?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, counsel, the issue before you is to authorize the town to move forward in the fall with a bond referendum question that would seek public authorization to borrow up to no more than $1.4 million to fund road improvements on Route 1A, a traffic signal intersection reconstruction at Route 1A and Route 9, and bridge improvements and repairs that are being required by the State Department of Transportation for Sawyer Road and Manning Mill, two bridges located at those locations.
Any public question? Public comments on this? Any counselor comments on this?
I guess I'd just like to say, we discussed this pretty heavily in finance earlier. The $1.4 million should give us enough to cover these costs. Hopefully, there won't be any more rate increases like the state sprung on us on the Route 1A project, causing us to go back and have to find more funding. I think we've allowed a little cushion in there. We didn't put too much cushion in, but we're in hopes to spend less than that money. But this way, in case we have more increases from the state or people that we have no control over, then we'll have enough to cover that cost going forward.
Thank you, David. Anyone else have any questions? Are we still open? I entertain a motion, we move out of public session?
Motion to close the session?
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Thank you. This time, I'd entertain a motion authorizing appropriation and borrowing of up to $1.4 million in funds for the finance road and bridge improvements.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Public discussion? Counselor discussion? The only thing I would like to say on this is that, having sat here almost four years that things wear out, and it's unfortunate that they do, but it happens. Some of us who have been in town a long time have seen this, and our only means of repairing these things is to go out and get the public to support a bond, so that we can repair them and keep the town hopefully in a good condition.
Actually, I wanna make a comment, too. I wanted to commend the town manager. Literally, this was like the first thing he had to do, the first day that he was ever in the office, was to come up with a way to cover, what was it, a $1.3 million shortfall in the highway budget from a project that had been ongoing with the state, that the state came back and said, nope, sorry, you don't have enough money. And over the course of two months now, he's managed to do that with the help of the town staff and find creative ways to find the money to fill the gap. And that was pretty much the first thing he had to do on day one. So hats off to stepping right into the fire.
I guess I'd also like to add that three out of these four projects are mandated by the state. The town doesn't have anything to say about it. The bridges are controlled by the federal government and the state. We've been told that these are issues, they're gonna have to be fixed. So it's just a matter of time. And obviously, as far as the Sawyer Road, you have a metal culvert, and, you know, you've got wear and rust going on, and at what point does that collapse when somebody's driving across the road? So, you know, these are things we have to look into repairing. We don't have a choice, but at some point, we need to get it done before it really is a big safety issue.
Thank you, David. Anyone else have any comments on this? We discussed it heavily. Yes, Dennis?
Just gonna echo everything that's been said and agree with it, and then state the obvious, which is, as this community grows, so grows our transportation. Most families are driving multiple vehicles. As we encourage new small business investment in the town, there's gonna be commercial driving. We need to stay up with this, so that both safety and appearance mirror the reality of what's going on with traffic. So be a lot more fun if we could do it at a third the cost, but we can't control everything, so it is what it is.
Thank you. Yes, public, Valerie, you wanna speak? Come on right up. Don't forget your green button.
Valerie Webster, 1335 Carmel Road North in Hampden. And while we're talking about roads, let's talk about my road. It is the worst road in the town of Hampden. I know it's a state road, but someone in this room has gotta have some kind of pull. I mean, they've been out, they've surveyed it, they've driven stakes, they skimcoated it once three years ago. It is like, it's worse than a cow path. It is an embarrassment, but I notice nobody gives me back any of my tax money, because I live on the worst road in Hampden. It is disgusting. So I don't know what we have to do to try to fix it. Do you know, have you been out my way?
Yes, ma'am.
It's lovely, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Every road in town has been resurfaced, even when I didn't feel they needed to be, because I'm using my road as a gauge. So as far as I'm concerned, no other road needs to be done. But we've been promised, we've been promised, we've been promised, we've been promised. They've driven their stakes, the stakes have been knocked down by the plow trucks, that all has to be done. They've spray painted. That's been dug up by the plow trucks and broken away. And I'm just asking for someone to check into the situation and let us know what's going on. Coal patch, coal patch, coal patch. Huh?
2021. When I talk to DOT, DOT 2021 is when they do fix up.
What is it now? 2018?
18, yeah.
Yeah, it's never gonna last three years. So, anyway, that's the end of my conversation. Thank you.
It's unfortunate, 'cause your state representative just walked out the door. It's unfortunate, because your state representative just walked out the door.
Well, I live right around the corner, so I drive it every day, a couple times a day, too, so I'm with you. Well, I live right on the Kennebec Road, right around the corner. So, yeah.
Public hearing's open on this, right? No, we're closed.
Oh, I know.
Anyone else want to discuss this, or do we want to take a vote?
To fix the Kennebec Road?
We don't want, all those in favor? Authorizing the appropriation and borrowing of funds for the finance for the road and bridge improvements. All those in favor? Opposed? Everyone opposed. Okay. Next item, this goes on to public hearing, too. Consideration for new victualer's license application for TradeWinds Variety, the fifth, the sixth, located at 98 Cobook Road, owned by Eddington Market, Inc., and operated by Ben Hanson of Eddington. Move to go to open session?
So moved.
A public session. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Okay, it's moved and seconded. We move to open session, the victualer's license for TradeWinds. Any public comments on this? Super, being none, any councilors' comments on this? Yes, Dennis?
Being of senior age and short-term memory loss, I'm just looking for a clarification, a reminder again, on the timing of this, which I thought I remembered from reading, might be argued as a little bit unusual. We're just trying to make this work with construction rather than waiting after. Is that what I'm remembering?
Correct. At this point, there is nothing for the code officer or the building inspector to inspect per ordinance, and also, that is why we are holding public hearing, because by ordinance, the first victualer's license has to be approved under a public hearing. And the code enforcement officer and I talked, and we thought that it would be appropriate to approve the license conditional upon the occupancy permit.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. Thanks, Paula. No public discussion, any other discussion with the council?
I'm excited that, you know, TradeWinds has chosen us for their next expansion in a new community, and just for the record, my daughter is very excited that there's going to be a smoothie bar inside. Very excited, because you can't get a smoothie anywhere anymore, so she's very excited about that. Yes, smoothies.
Following up on that, I move we come out of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We come out of public hearing. All of those in favor? Great. Consider a motion?
I make a motion that the town council support the issuance of a new victualer's license application conditional upon certificate of occupancy for the TradeWinds Variety Six, located at 98 Cobook Road, owned by Eddington Market, Inc., and operated by Ben Hanson of Eddington.
Second.
Super. I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Any further councilor's comment on this? Being none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Good deal. All right. Thank you, public, for all the public we had. That's the end of public tonight. We have no nomination appointments elections, we have no unfinished business. We'll now jump into new business. The first item is request for authorization for the expenditure of $29,280 from the Police Cruiser Reserve Account 3-753-00 for the purchase of a new cruiser. I'd accept the motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment? Any councilor's comments? Dennis?
Just to remind the public, this is fairly routine at this point with the existence of a capital plan, and this is just authorizing money basically already approved.
That's correct. Also, the fact that the cruiser is a Explorer, I believe, that the bid came in on. I don't believe they do automobiles anymore, cars. It's now all SUVs.
It has to be a V number.
The public don't hear that. All of those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Super. Okay, second item is the council approval of an off-premise liquor license by a qualified catering organization for an event to be held at the Historic Hamden Academy on September 12th, 2018.
Make a motion that we approve an off-premise liquor license by a qualified catering organization, who a number of us know because it was listed, for an event to be held at the Historic Hamden Academy on September 12th of this year.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any public questions? Any councilor's questions? My understanding is that's by Harbor Banking and Trust. That is, I believe. Being none, all those in favor? Super. Yes, we need signatures, so don't run away. Last time, I think I let you run away. Here, some of you can start signing. The next item is a council approval to receive snowmobile club trail grant funds on behalf of the Goodwill Riders Snowmobile Club. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Perhaps, Jim, you'd like to explain this to the public, exactly so they understand what we're doing?
He wasn't here.
Oh, he wasn't here?
Why don't we do that?
We'll do that for you, then, Jim.
Because it came up in Services Committee last week, so I'll give it a quick overview.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
The Goodwill Riders Snowmobile Club, as many people in Hamden know, has been active in terms of maintaining and developing snowmobile trails in town for years. And Hamden has both, I'm going to get this part wrong. ITS are municipal as well as public or club trails, and so they have an opportunity to get the necessary resources to do a better job grooming what exists, to keep that going, as long as we, the town, act as the fiscal agent, as the pass-through for those funds from the state, because for whatever reason, the club can't. So, we talked about it in Services, we've confirmed with staff that there's not imposing a new burden on town staff or new costs or liability to the town. And with that, I would make a motion that we approve receiving snowmobile club trail grant funds on behalf of Goodwill Riders Snowmobile Club.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any public comments? Any councilor's comments? Being none, all those in favor? Because it's unanimous. At this time, with the council's permission, I would like to get a vote on inserting between C and D, the item taken up tonight in Finance, on the $1,863 to go for the grant, because that was made from, sent to us. So, would you like to do that, Terry?
I make a motion that we add the consideration of the assistance to the firefighters' grant award notification to the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have a motion that we expend the amount of $1,863 for our share of the $3,935 federal grant for fitness equipment for public safety.
So moved.
You want to explain to this, or for the public?
Sure. For the public's benefit, the Fire Department Lieutenant had submitted a grant some 20 years ago for fitness equipment to be used here by the public safety officers, firefighters and police officers. That equipment is worn out, so they've secured a new grant to replace and add new equipment to the fitness center downstairs that they use to keep themselves in shape. So, the $1,800 match secures $39,000 in the form of a FEMA grant. So, I'd like to commend the fire and rescue personnel who pursued the grant, and the leadership of Joe Rogers, the Public Safety Director, for authorizing and supporting that activity.
Thank you. Any other questions on it? Public questions?
I guess I'd just like to commend the staff also for going forward and pursuing these grants. It saves the town a lot of money. Over the course of several years, they've done a great job in getting grants, and I appreciate their effort, really above and beyond their job to help the town get some extra funding.
Thank you. I think also, it might be known that this is an enhancement for looking for police and fire. There's a lot of places that do not have this available, with the overnight accommodations that we provide, plus having a facility now to be able to have a weight room and a complete to workout, that it does enhance the ability to draw in new people into the police and fire, which is extremely difficult to find right now. So, that's a nice thing that sometimes we overlook. Being that, all of those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. The next big item. At this time, I would accept the motion for setting the 2018, 2019 mil rate for the town of Hamden at 19.6 mils per thousand.
So moved.
It's been moved, I can't do anything unless I get a number two. I get a second? None of you guys?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that we accept the mil rate of 19.6 mils for the 2018, 2019 year.
19.2.
Six, 19.6. That's what I said the first time, and that was what I meant. 18.4. Do you want to say anything on this? Mr. Manager?
Sure. The tax assessor has done the necessary research and adjusted the valuation for all the properties here in Hamden, submitted those numbers and all that information to the state. They use the state formula for determining the valuation. That gives us a range within which we're permitted to set a new mil rate, and the new mil rate is being set towards the low end of what we're permitted to set it at, of 19.6. It is an increase of 1.2 mil. That number, and all the numbers, are generated based on a number of factors. A significant factor is the school district budget, that we don't have any control over setting, but we need to support, and the county tax, and then our own budget. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but that's the general process that's followed by the tax assessor to determine the mil rate.
Thank you, Jim. Public questions?
Oh, I had one question first, if you don't mind. What was the amount of the increase from the school budget over the last year? Just so the, for the public, so they know.
800?
Our increase was, I believe our increased contribution over and above what we previously provided, was in the neighborhood of 600,000.
I was going to guess like 580.
It was just shy of 600,000 was the increase in our, I'd have to go to the budget document to get you a better number.
I don't need it right to the penny, but, you know, for the public, you know, of this large increase, 600,000 is from the schools, so it, you know, should be noted here, so they understand where all this is coming from.
Any further discussion? Being that this is important, I would like to take a roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
No.
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 And I would vote yes. Passes four to three.
The exact number for the school increase? 571.
He has, you want to read it to him? He has the exact number for?
571,000 was the increase from the school district to the town, so it was a significant amount.
Thank you. Okay. Being all the new business, we'll move into committee reports. Planning and development? We haven't had one. Services?
Briefly, we had a Services Committee meeting last week. The committee approved the draft RFQ language, which means the town manager will be soliciting, not bids, but responses from engineers. This has to do with the potential increase permitting for parking and fields out on the Western Ave Recreation Center. We briefly discussed the Sawdapsco Extreme Boat Launch at Baffietus Landing. I'm going to get the name of this wrong again, but we've got a gentleman named Chris Packard representing, I think it's Landmark?
Heritage Land Trust.
What is it?
Landmark Heritage Land Trust.
Landmark Heritage Trust. We're trying to figure out a responsible way to work together to not lose that public access to that stream, for a bunch of reasons. We are, we decided to postpone all this next meeting. Potential changes in the Harbor Master Ordinance, still awaiting a legal opinion on some questions that came up. We found out that our town manager, in addition to solving transportation issues, Councilor Wright, also got appointed to a committee rooted in the Community Connector bus route and schedule, and they will be reviewing the entire depth and breadth of the whole system over the next, I assume, six months at least, looking to bring it back to Services to revisit the idea of what is best for this town in terms of public transportation, and what should that look like. Rich Armstrong, under public comment, brought to our attention the arrangement you heard about tonight, receiving state funds as a pass-through for the grooming of the snowmobile trails, and that wrapped up that meeting.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark, did we have an infrastructure meeting?
We have not. The next meeting is the 27th, next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah. Terry, you want to say anything about finance and administration?
Everything that we had on the agenda for finance and administration tonight, with the addition of the money from the matching funds account for the equipment, was dealt with just within the last 15 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to managers' report.
As you know, Mr. Mayor and Councilor, I was away for the last two weeks for both professional and personal travel, so I'd just like to commend staff for the tremendous job that they did. I was in constant communication with them, Deputy Town Manager Joe Rogers, and he took care of things while I was away. Apologies for missing the Services Committee meeting.
No problem. Did Joe buy the car while you was gone?
He snuck that in under the radar, yeah, while I was away.
Okay. Counselors' comments? David?
No comment.
Shelby?
No comment.
Dennis?
No comment.
Stephen?
No comment.
Mark?
No comment.
Terry?
Just want to remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
And I have no comments. And with that, we will call the council meeting adjourned. Thank you.